Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Braintree Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 27th. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please remain standing and join me in a moment of silence for our men and women in uniform? Thank you very much. Please be seated. We have the roll call for the council.
Counsel Barica.
Here.
Counsel Flaherty.
Here.
Counsel Hume.
Here.
Counsel Meglio is presently not here. Counsel Moran.
Here.
Counsel Quilty.
Here.
Counsel Reynolds.
Here.
Counsel Ringus.
Here.
Counsel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So are there any announcements from any of the counselors?
Hi, guys.
Okay. All right. Hearing no on announcements, we have approval of the minutes for February 6, 2024. Do we have a motion?
So moved, good, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the -- to approve the minutes of February 6, 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is to -- we have old business, and the first old business that we'll be conducting is to refer -- is to open three public hearings, and we're going to continue those public hearings till March 19th. So the three pub -- the three issues are 22012, Mayor, zoning bylaw text amendment, inclusionary housing, and associated revisions or take up any action related thereto. We're going to continue that public hearing to March 19th, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. 23080, Mayor, CPC appropriation, request for appropriation, fire station historic restoration or take up any action related thereto. Public hearing continued to March 19th, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. And finally, 23086, Mayor, transfer funds from the salary reserves or take up any action related thereto. Public hearing, public hearing continued to March 19th, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. Do we have a motion to open the public hearings for order 22012, order 23080, and order 23086?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to open those public hearings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. So we're going to need to continue -- we need a motion to continue the public hearings for order 22012, 2012, excuse me, order 23080 and order 23086 to March 16th, 2000 -- March 19th, I'll get it right, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. Do we have a motion to continue the public hearings?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. The -- we're going to go -- if there's no objection, I'm going to go out of order with the agenda, and we're going to go to 24007, Mayor, request appropriation, CPC appropriation, Independence Manor, window replacement, or take up any action related thereto. Is there any objection to going out of order? Okay. Thank you. So do we have a motion to open the public hearing for order 24007?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. So I'm going to refer to Counsel Barica, the chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on order 24007.
Thank you very much, President Ryan. The Committee of Ways and Means met last week, and we voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the council.
Thank you. And would anyone from the mayor's staff like to speak on order 24007? Melissa? We're going to have to give you our one microphone.
I don't know if I need it. Well, so they can hear me on the recording.
Good evening.
So thank you, everyone. Good evening. A pleasure to be here with Katie Barker, also from Independence Manor. We did a fairly detailed presentation and overview last week at the Ways and Means, and we thanked them for their time and, obviously, their favorable recommendation. My staff, myself, and Liz Manning, my CPC manager, have been working with Katie Barker for probably about a year now in reviewing the preservation of affordable units and preservation of the structure. One of the structures at Independence Manor, that actual development consists of three different projects and three different buildings. This is the 95-unit building that we're going to be talking about this evening. Katie was faced with situations where she needed to make some substantial improvements to the windows of the building in order to keep that building in a tight situation. She's starting to take on a little bit of water. You can tell by just driving by, the windows are all fogged up and really not serving the purpose that they were intended to do, further not providing the environment for our seniors at this particular location. So in our first conversations with Katie going back, this is a very expensive project, and Katie was able to provide matching funds. She's paying for about 50% of the project, and then we're working towards CPC, hopefully with your recommendation this evening, to get the other $1.14 million, which also includes a contingency. So she has some baseline prices. She is securing 50% of the funding on her own, and we're here this evening looking for the rest of that funding so she can complete this project. In addition to completing the project, we'll be working with Katie to -- right now, she is in a voluntary period where she's keeping the rents extremely low because she's just a really great person, and their mission, going back to her father and her family, is to do that and to provide low-income housing to seniors here in the community and beyond. So we'll be working with her to put a formal restriction in place. That's part of the requirement for the CPC funding, but that also provides assurance not only to the town of Braintree, in the council this evening, and the residents, but if there are some future sales or different things that happen with the building, they have no intentions of doing that now. We know as a community that we have built in affordability going forward at this particular development. We do -- Katie, if you wanted to come up, we do have some, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, we have some handouts, and we also have our consultant here from Habib, who's been working with Katie on the design and the intricacy of this particular project. She has done a mock-up of the window, myself and our former mayor, and our CPC manager did go over and take a look at that, and it really is like night and day. You can see out the window. It's got a beautiful new encasement. They're very easy to open and close, and just the things that people would look to in any residential unit for their windows. And that's all I have this evening. Mr. Chairman, available for any other questions, and Katie's also here, any questions directly for her as well.
Okay. Did any counselors have any questions or comments? Counsel Barica.
Thank you, President Ryan, and thank you for being here again. Actually, I have a couple of questions after our conversation last week. I just wanted to get some clarity on -- Director Santucci-Razi, you may have touched on this. So originally, the Independence Manor was financed by Mass Housing.
Correct.
Which --
Correct.
That financing meant it had to be affordable, or is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
It was considered a moderate-income program under their 13A interest subsidy reduction.
And now that is done? I'm just trying to figure out why --
It expires.
It expires.
That's the term that we use.
So if you were to ever sell this, and someone wasn't maybe as generous or as gracious as you, there would be no protection for --
In this building.
To keep -- in this building for keeping it at low income without this appropriation. Is that correct, Director?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. No, thank you for that clarification. I wanted to make sure I understood it. And these will also count towards our subsidized housing inventory with the state?
Correct. They have been on the inventory for my inventory, and they -- we refer to them in the housing world as expiring units, which means the affordability period that was tied to funding, typically, once you pay off that, whether it's an interest-free loan or a very low-interest-bearing housing finance, typically, that's when the affordability requirement goes away. There are several developments that extend that, and they refinance, and then that adds more years on the affordability. So that's another way that some of the projects in Braintree have extended their affordability period, too. Once they put more money back in, similar to this, we're putting money in, looking for something in exchange.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Can I just make up a comment?
Sure.
Is that all right? I said this at the Ways and Means Committee meeting, but I want to echo up here for the full council that, and I looked back, and I think -- I think Ms. Manning put this together in all of the time we've had the CPA funding, Community Preservation Act funding, only 18% of the projects have gone towards affordable housing. And I know this is near and dear to your heart, Director, and I appreciate that, but I also think it is hugely important that we're using this money for these purposes. All these projects are important, but we have historically underfunded affordable housing projects, or maybe they haven't come before us. So I'm really happy to be supporting this this evening. It will, again, have my full support, but I wanted to let folks know that this is a great way to rebalance our portfolio. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Moran.
Thank you. I just want to echo Counsel Barica's comments. This is an excellent step to improve and preserve senior housing at a relatively or comparatively low cost. If we're able to retain or restrict future use of 90 units for this amount of money is -- it's a no-brainer. And I've been a big fan of the work that the Connors family have been doing for five decades now over at Independence Manor. It's been a tremendous asset for the community and for many, many families, seniors that have aged out of their homes in Braintree and found a new home and a new community there. And I fully support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? I just want to add, I think it's a great use of community preservation funds for the town of Braintree to be able to ensure that these units are there for our seniors in the town. As everyone knows, there's a shortage of housing, affordable housing especially, and housing for seniors and people being able to stay in Braintree. I think it's great. You know, we have this -- the CPC funds, we spend them on affordable housing, on parks and recreation, on historical preservation, and it's, as Counsel Barica mentioned, this is great that we're using these funds tonight for affordable housing. So it's a -- I really think the CPC funding for the town of Braintree has just done wonderful things in our community, and this is just another example of that. And, you know, senior housing, replacing the windows, I have to replace the windows in my house. And my house is pretty old, and to think about people being able to deal with new windows and easier use and just having better windows, I think it's wonderful. So I fully support this. This was endorsed by the Community Preservation Committee, correct?
Correct. Favorable recommendation, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any further discussion? It's a public hearing. Does anybody from the public, would anyone from the public like to speak on this? Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. President, motion to close public hearing for order 24007.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Do we have a motion on this matter?
Mr. President, in accordance to the provisions of MGL, Chapter 44B, with the recommendation at the Community Preservation Committee, the amount of $550,000 to be expended from the Community Housing Fund and $890,000 from the undesigned funds for the Independence Manor window replacement assesses map 20680-3, said funding to be supervised and expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Community and Development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
And your support, and we're looking forward to continuing our long relationship with the town of Braintree and successful projects.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, and appreciate you taking the added turn.
The next item we're going to go back to is 24006, Mayor, request for appropriation, CPC appropriation, Doherty Pickleball Courts, acoustic sound panels, or take up any action related thereto. This also requires a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Counsel President, motion to open public hearing for order 24006.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing's now open. I'm going to refer to Counsel Barica, chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on order 24006.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. Last week, the committee met on this matter, and the vote was four in favor, one opposed. So it was a favorable recommendation for the full council.
Thank you. Okay. Would anyone from the mayor's staff like to speak on order 24006? Melissa?
Good evening, and thank you again. Tonight, I am here with Jan Barris and her pickleball people, her committee, and it looks like some supporters and players as well. We had worked with Jan in the first initial redoing of the courts a couple of years ago. They've been playing on them quite a bit, and they have recently encountered some concerns about noise in the neighborhood. Jan, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, if she comes up and just kind of starts to give some information as well.
Sure.
Has done quite a bit of homework and researched quite a bit of companies and has some materials that she would like to share with the group this evening, including some samples. But essentially, here in support of the Braintree Pickleball League, Liz Manning from my office has done a majority of the work in conjunction with Jan, making sure that the quotes were in place and the application was complete. And here supporting that also have received a favorable recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee as well.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for spending the time to speak with us. We started working on this back in probably August, myself and Janice Walsh, another one of the committee members, looking to get quotes for sound panels. We worked for about three or four months, got the sound panels. We have three recommendations, which I believe is in your package. We went with VibraScience for a couple of reasons. They're local, they're -- compared to the others, the other companies are all in Florida or Minnesota, and VibraScience is in Connecticut. Their rep came up several times, actually measured our courts, made the recommendations of what we should use, and we selected their BBC panel.
Bless you.
We selected their samples, their panels that are made by a company called SoundSeal in Agawol. So I have some samples here of them. If you'd like to see that?
Sure.
So these are the two that were actually -- it's the same, just two samples of the one that we're going with. They're also going to be --
Yeah, I think you really need to talk into the microphone so everybody at home can hear you, too. Sorry. Thank you.
Those are the two we're going with. There was another acoustic panel that we looked at. It was from Acoustablock, which doesn't include the quilted sound absorber in the front, and that quote is also one in the package. Like I said, we chose VibraScience because of their locale. They came up and did a lot of the investigative work for us, measured the courts, made some suggestions, did sounds, sound readings for us. We'll come back and do them again after the court -- after the panels are installed. And it's just, it's, I think it's the best option at this time. They've been used in courts in Janice --
Burlington.
Burlington, which we went out to see. They use a different panel. It's called Acoustablock, which is this one. So it comes in either green or black.
No padding.
There's no padding on it, so it's strictly --
We can't get this one in Braintree blue?
We can. It's more expensive.
We can. It's more expensive. You want to get something like that, you can get Braintree blue. That's what I --
I set myself up there.
When you look at their quote, there's something called Vivid, and Vivid is basically their custom colors. So we chose VibraScience because it's a two-pot panel, as opposed to just the rubber back.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the council? Counsel Hume?
Thank you. So, Mr. President, Director Santucci, your department is all, this is your recommendation to use this material. You reviewed everything? Oops, sorry. Didn't realize.
As far as a personal recommendation, I wouldn't be providing a personal recommendation. The recommendation that I provide is relative to the community preservation and whether or not it's eligible and whether or not it falls within the confines of community preservation. I did talk to Jan about these and looked at the three quotes, similar to what she had explained. I said, "This guy's local. He's in Connecticut. He's able to come up here and view the facility." I mean, some of these people, they design them from aerial photos halfway across the world. I liked that this gentleman seemed to be vested in the community. He's come up multiple times. He's come up to done the readings. He's done all the measurements. He's almost acting like we've already hired him. He's doing that amount of work to demonstrate that he is, in fact, vested. The other companies, it's kind of just more cut-sheet type thing. They really weren't getting into details. So as far as my recommendation, I looked to make sure if she has the three quotes, which she has done that. She has shown me the sample similar that she's shown. Again, I'm not a sound expert, but looking at the quality of this material and looking at sort of the, the, not the care, but the time that the VibraScience gentleman, his first name, is it Joe?
Yes.
Joe, has put into coming up here. Seems like this is somebody that the town should be working with as a vendor.
Okay. Is there any maintenance involved in this?
No. They'll go up. The rec department is going to do the installation. Joe also recommend -- offered to come up during the installation if there's any questions while they're installing them. There's a one-year warranty of the product. Once it goes up, it stays up. We could take them down if we wanted to, but there's a storage issue on these. You don't want them to get destroyed somewhere if you put them in, you know, someplace in storage somewhere. There's a one-year warranty and a life expectancy of 10 years.
Okay. That was one of my other questions. And also, so for winter, any issues with winter weather? Because I know, like, on the tennis, it's not a sound barrier, but the --
Those are wind screens.
The wind screens get destroyed.
They do.
In the weather. Any issues with this product, with the weather?
This product is warranted for 150 mile an hour winds. They use it in Florida. It stays up during hurricanes. We use a stainless steel cable tie for the installation, which the Braintree Pickleball players will pay for. We get that information from Joe. And once they're up, they Velcro down the sides, so they, when they go together, there's no gap between them. It holds them together. And if you have any other questions, I mean, I can answer what I can.
I may have missed this in here. What's the height of it? Does it go floor to how far up?
Yes. Eight feet.
Eight feet. Okay.
Covers the gates, wraps around the entire back section that faces Wyntart Road, and comes up three sections on the side that faces the football field.
Okay. Looks like a great product. I appreciate all this. I did have some questions that the mayor's office had responded to, and I talked to Counsel Moran on what came out of Ways and Means, so I am good with this. I appreciate all the pickleballers. I love pickleball. I know there are some residents who have some concerns who live there, so with this, I hope we're mindful of that and revisit when this goes up and listen to any of, you know, the concerns. And is there any in the future retesting the --
He's coming back once they're installed.
Okay, great. All right.
And this is, and no one is standing here saying this is going to be an end-all and be-all. This is, we don't want to overmitigate the situation. We don't want to enclose the entire playing area if that isn't necessary. These recommendations are for partial enclosure, and we can see what those get done. It's interesting, there's one of the communities that Jan went to visit, they put them up, and everything was enclosed, and then people didn't like it. So they actually ended up taking them down. So it's interesting when you think about going to a sport location, but you can't see what's going on inside the fence. So there's, I think there's a sweet spot between making sure that the neighbors are satisfied and the decibel levels are not exceeding the thresholds in the zoning bylaw, but also, it's an open park, it's, they're open courts, and really trying to, I think, respect both of those is really the goal here. If the testing is done post, they're suggesting about a 10-decibel level in reduction. In your pack, it was some information in various sound readings. If that does, in fact, happen, the readings out in the street, they're currently below 60, will be even lower than that. And Jan does have a little bit more information here about the panels, that, just some features that they highlight, excellent acoustic performance, custom sizing, easy to install, durable tear and abrasive resistant, great UV and mildew. These were all questions that we had originally as well, highly water repellent, and Class A flammability rating. So, I mean, those are all things that we want to make sure are in place in this facility. Again, the pickleball people do use the facility, but there's a lot of people using the park. There's a school there. There's a lot of activity happening in this particular location. This is an isolated end-user situation. Lot of different people from the public and the schools utilizing this location as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors have any questions or comments? Counsel Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Ms. Barris.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. I know we covered this information at the Ways and Means Committee meeting last week, but for the benefit of the council members who weren't there, there were some information you had provided as a result of some of the concerns that the neighbors had experienced and what this objective is to address, to mitigate the sounds. So I'm glad that Director Santucci-Razi brought up the decibels. So we know, I'd like to ask if you could just go through what the results of that testing was from the decibel standpoint?
Yes. So last week, I provided a diagram to show where it is. So the readings were taken on October 31st, about 3:30 in the afternoon. It was a sunny, dry day. The first location, first location is in the center of the courts. We had all eight courts going. So we had players playing. They filled the courts. Were playing all the full games, and we took the readings inside the walkway of the courts. The maximum decibel reading at that time inside the courts was 81 and an average of 68.1. The next reading --
No, 85.
I'm sorry, 85.1. Sorry. The next one was sample two, which is right here. So we stepped back out of the courts.
Towards the football field.
Somewhere about halfway down the hill. If you're familiar with the area, there's a roll there. We're about halfway down the hill, and we took readings there, and those measured a maximum of 76.6 and an average of 65.1. I want to point out that during that time that we were there, there was football practice going on. So a lot of the higher pitch spikes came from the coaches blowing their whistles. The third location is in the back corner, so if you're familiar with the new gate that the rec department has put in, it's right on the corner of Wyntart. And those were a maximum of 68.5 with an average of 59.6. Again, we're pretty close to the football field that was going on with the practice. And the last location was on Wyntart Road. It was at the deepest part of the farthest away. It was at the deepest part of the farthest away, onto the, right on the sidewalk, in front of-
61 feet away from the court.
61 feet away from the court. The maximum was 61.9, the average was 57.3. The panels are, Joe has told me the panels should drop the readings 10 decibels. So if that's the case, they will all be within the readings of the town's bylaws for noise.
Great. And you said that they would come back and they're going to retest that-
Yes.
-after-
After the installation.
And under the same, similar-
We'll take the readings in the same spots. We'll have all eight courts going again to get the maximum playing, and we'll see what these readings come up with. And Joe's willing to do that. All we have to do is give him, you know, give him a call and he'll come up. I anticipate that he's going to come up, if the rec department wants him to, for the installation also.
Terrific. And so, thank you. I mean, this, the test results you presented to us, and again this evening, they obviously tend toward a more positive outcome and performance for the neighborhood. And that is really, was the crux of my concerns, was the neighborhood impact. So I know during the Ways and Means committee meeting, you did present a lot of good information, as again this evening you have, that trends towards the positive to addressing this problem. So I voted against it for recommendation only due to the fact that we didn't hear from the neighbors on this that evening, was no testimony taken. So, as I said, I would like to hear from the neighbors this evening, just to hear what their concerns. I have seen some emails that have indicated they are seeing this as a positive first step. So, Mr. President, that's pretty much the result, that is the extent of my comments. I would like the opportunity to ask a follow-up question if possible after hearing from the neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the council? Council Baraka?
Yeah, thank you, President Ryan. One quick question, thank you. For, I don't know, I know Mr. Griffin's here, but as a practical matter, this, we didn't discuss this at the Ways and Means meeting, who is going to take care of any graffiti defacement? We're putting up a wall, sort of, I know. It's a terrible thing to have to think about, but I want to make sure we have a plan in place ahead of time that if it is vandalized, like, the cost, the remediation, all that. So, I don't know, if that's for Mr. Griffin, or if we need to wait and have the mayor's staff come back.
But you have to use the mic.
Yeah, we'll sit down, and then if we need it, we can come back up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And particularly for a high-traffic area like this, you know, our crews are trained in, you know, removing that sort of thing, you know, and we obviously will make the, you know, police aware that, you know, these new panels going up, that they are, you know, a worthwhile investment. And it's unfortunate, hopefully it doesn't happen, but we all know, you know, that doesn't always happen, but our crews, you know, are trained in, you know, removal and maintenance of any sort of vandalism or graffiti. It would be, you know, a larger conversation probably with the supplier if any physical damage came to them, like, you know, like a slice through or something like that, that would need more particular repairs. But as far as like graffiti or any sort of that maintenance, we'd, our crews are trained in removing that sort of thing, and we can, if we get a report on it, we can prioritize that removal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I do think we should just have some kind of answer from the manufacturer if there is repairs that need to happen, what, how that works. But I would just, may I continue? Thank you. I would like to just add, you know, I think the town has invested a lot of money in the pickleball, improving the pickleball courts for the enjoyment of all of our residents, and it's come with overwhelming success, and also with some unintended consequences of the noise with the neighbors. And I know when this concern was raised, I want to commend the Braintree pickleball players for really jumping on it, taking the concern seriously. There was a lot of diligence, and I know sometimes things feel like they take a long time, but this has actually gone very quickly thanks to the commitment and the partnership of the Braintree pickleball players. So I'm really hopeful that this resolution will allow for both the continuation of one of Braintree's most active clubs and popular clubs, and a great source of community pride and activity, and also provide sufficient, you know, quality of life and noise mitigation for the nearby neighbors. So again, I want to just say thank you to the pickleball players and to Director Santucci-Rozzi for her assistance in bringing this forward. Thank you. Thank you, President Ryan.
You're welcome. Would any other councilors have any comments or questions? Council Flaherty?
I don't have a question, but I, the way, I thought I would share the way I view this. I view it as a good first step. Pickleball, the pickleball players are making a good faith effort to respond to resident concerns about the noise level. And, you know, I think this is a worthy investment in a terrific recreational asset that we've cultivated in the last few years. Every neighborhood deserves reasonable peace and quiet. So we will keep an eye on the results. We'll measure again the decibel levels at different times of day and with different weathers if necessary, at different times of year. We can enhance this down the road if necessary. I have thought plant trees would be good because, as an addition to other things, not instead of, but, you know, there are things that we can add down the road if we need to. And this is a good start. I think it will be very reasonable to continue our pursuit of a solution that meets all the needs of the community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the council? I wanted to ask if Chris Griffin can come back up to the microphone, please.
So I just want to make sure that this system was selected by the pickleball association. I want to make sure that you are comfortable with this and the product, the installation, the maintenance, all of that.
I am, and, you know, we, you know, we've made the commitment that, you know, our teams, you know, to, obviously, number one, it saves costs on installation, you know, that our internal teams will be able to put it up. I can tell you that it will be an absolute priority when it arrives. We've already had discussions about, should approval come down tonight, about prioritizing the, you know, the process for purchasing it, because it is, you know, and, you know, the funding will become available, and, you know, we've already had discussions about expediting that to bring a solution to that as quick as possible. But I can commit that, you know, just with, you know, any other space, you know, these will very much be regularly checked by our staff, installed by our staff. I appreciate the willingness of the vendor to, you know, be on site to offer, you know, pointers and advice as that process goes. But I can assure you that, you know, when it's ordered and when it's, you know, when it's arrived, it will be prioritized above, you know, other tasks, if you will.
Thank you. And one of the things I wanted to mention, I have some, this type of material installed at several of the facilities that I'm involved with operating and maintaining, and when you have high winds, this is going to be something that you have to make sure it doesn't go flying. And, you know, what happens in a situation like that, the weakest point is going to fail on these, or maybe what you're saying, they Velcroed together, they're going to come apart, maybe.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that, you know, we just take that into consideration.
Yeah, we have, our ground staff does, you know, does regular checks of all of our facilities, you know, for safety, whether it be, you know, playgrounds, or, you know, if a piece of equipment needs to be repaired. So this will just be another one of their tasks, to just do a regular check to make sure all the ties are tied and, you know, as they should be. And, you know, as they will have installed at that point, they'll have some, you know, some experience based on their conversations with the manufacturer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, is there any further comments or questions from the council? Right, hearing none. I'm going to open up the public hearing to the public, and I just want to remind people that they can come up and talk for five minutes. And we're talking about the CPC appropriation for acoustic panels. I don't want to get too far afield with this. So anyone from the general public, would you like to come up and talk? Sir, could you come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Michael Megley. I live on Wynton Road, and I'm part of the problem with this, I mean, bringing this problem to the town. I have a problem with the, because the sound readings I had done. I've also sent via email live recordings that show the pops, this wasn't on the same day with the football team was out there. It shows that it's over 85 decibels in front of my house. It's actually my neighbor's house, but, and there's just been too much. So we're looking for a reasonable solution, pickleball noise problem, to the pickleball noise problem. The sound-absorbing material as planned is a good start, but we would like to see more. We'd like to see some of the hours cut down because-
So I just want to remind you, we're really just here talking about the acoustic panels.
Well, the neighbors are filing a complaint with the building people because-
Excuse me for one, excuse me for one second, sir. So we're really here just talking about the community preservation appropriation-
Okay.
-for acoustic sound panels. We're not here to, you know, go in-depth about the pickleball courts and, you know, and come up with a plan. This is really just tonight, a public hearing for the acoustic sound panels, so.
Okay. Well, I've asked for a public hearing on the problem, but I was denied. The, so, these are the sound recordings I had done. I had them done at Landmark, I had them done in front of my house twice, and they're well above the 85 decibels. Let's see, there's, the, let's see. So, per the research that I've done, at 100 feet, you can expect 70 decibels. That's just the standard that the industry uses. Not with any, what do they call it? Any protection, no sound barriers. So that's straight up what it's, the industry absorbs. I mean, so, we're at over, we're 60 feet. The, and it's 13 hours a day. And, let's see, they also have, with the sound material, from what I've read on it, and I have some documents on it, is reflection and infraction and the weather affect whether this will work. We have a Landmark building that causes a large reflection. We don't know if this is going to even help anything because of that building. Residents of that building also don't particularly care for the sound. And it also affects further away from my house, where I'm closer, to my neighbors at the top of the street with the noise. And that, this sound barrier will not protect anything because it's only doing, like, three houses. So we want more action. And I'm going to, I guess, is it the building committee that I make a complaint to? For noise variance or noise?
I would get on, see, click, fix, and make, and submit a formal complaint if you wanted to submit a complaint.
Well, I was told that no one in the town had heard about this problem from last, the Ways and Means meetings. I want it officially noted, that it's disturbing our lives.
Understood. Council Baraka, go ahead.
Just to respond, Mr. Megley, after the Ways and Means committee meeting, we did, the clerk of the council did re-notify this current administration's office, so we have that.
But they also said someone in the building department had to be notified?
Council Reynolds?
Right, that would be the code compliance officer. And the code compliance officer is also a town building inspector. But that is their responsibility, the code compliance officer. And they do have the technology to go down and do a sound test.
So that's part of the problem with most readings, they don't do it for a short time. There's three types of readings. It's impulse, short, and long. The longer you do it, the more averaging it does. The impulse is what you hear, but it doesn't necessarily pick it up and record it. So we need to be mindful of that. Because when I had downloaded an app on my phone, I got it averaged out to like 65 at my house. But when I had the sound engineer come by, it's a whole different ballpark. But that's all.
Thank you. Was there anyone else from the general public that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Maggie Chudow, and I live at Leaven Wynton Road. So I'm at the top of the street. And I do support some thing to try to mitigate the sound, but I will tell you, I do hear that pop. But to mention just about sound readings, we found a study that was done from Manchester by the sea by a pickleball sound mitigation company. And one of the things that they noted was that the noise ordinances for the state of Massachusetts, and they also happened to mention Boston, do not properly address the impulse noise from pickleball and cannot be effectively used to judge objectable noise levels from pickleball. Both ordinances, blah, 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 they couldn't quantify it properly. So there is a problem in, whether it's town government or what, in getting the right type of equipment to monitor the noise, the sound. And I don't know if the town has, you know, the proper sound, none of us know that, obviously. You probably don't even either. But you may or may not. So, yes, as a first step, this is good, but there are other steps. And is there some place we can have a public, even with all of you, to have a hearing, for you to listen to some of the other things? Whether it's reduced hours of play, or a tennis bubble is another thing that they've, that are recommendations.
So-
And with a tennis bubble, they might be able to play all year long. Hey!
Thank you. So, the town council doesn't run the town of Braintree.
Right.
All right? We're the legislative body in the town of Braintree, so we're not going to be the one making, you know, the decisions you want. It's the mayor's office and the Parks and Recreation Department and the mayor's staff and, you know-
Okay. We'll make sure we get an appointment with the mayor, and she can bring in the Parks Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I see you have your hand up, Joe, but I'm going to let Council Megley talk for the first time, please.
Thank you. I've got a couple of, couple of small, brief points to make. The first one is that I, I appreciate the patience that the residents have demonstrated because you've actually been sending emails and reaching out about this for months and months and months. It was, it started back in the summer, I believe, last summer. And the fact that it fell on deaf ears at the town level, I think, is really unfortunate because when people feel like they're not being listened to, people feel like they don't matter. And everyone matters. And so, the fact that it took a new administration in order to finally get the wheels moving on something like this to actually address it, I am grateful that it's happening. I agree it's a first step, and hopefully it's the, maybe it's the only step, but it's a good first step. The, the other thing is that in terms of the, the vote that we're about to take, I just want to say, I said this for the record during the Ways and Means, and I want to say it tonight, that I am a past member of the pickleball team, league. I will be, most likely become a member again this summer. I don't know if I am right now, but I do believe that I can vote on this in terms of a very neutral and objective way, in terms of seeing a solution for the residents using funds that are protecting an investment that was already made and that are dedicated for something like this. So I just wanted to mention those two things and to thank you for your patience, and I really do hope this is what it takes. really do hope this is what it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to echo some of the comments of the previous speaker, Council Meglio, that it was disappointing. This is my district trying to work with this past administration and getting this addressed was very frustrating. I'm very happy over the fact that this current administration is willing to address this question and engage the pickleball as well as the neighbors to try to come up with a solution for this problem, or that has been a problem for the neighbors. I also agree with some of the previous speaker's comments that this is a first good step. So, I want to thank Mr. Megley and Ms. Trudel for your comments, for your tenaciousness staying along with this, because this is a quality of life issue. Health and recreation is also a quality of life issue. So, where do we, what do we do? Where do we find the balance? I'm happy to hear that the folks think this is a good first step. Some of the things that came out of our meeting last week at the Ways and Means Committee were some possible and optimistic additional steps if they're required. So, I didn't think we heard them, heard, spoken this evening, but the, so, the fence in the playing area itself is only going to be encased pretty much along the Wynott side and then along the area facing the field or the, facing the field, and then it will come up along the other side, opposite side as well, so both the north and the south sides and the east side? No?
Yeah. It's coming up on the side.
Would you please come up? All right, great.
It's coming up the side that faces the football field.
Okay.
Probably...
Thank you.
Three or four fence sections. The fence sections, I believe, are 10 feet. So, it'll come past the gate on the football side, the first gate, which is in the corner.
Yep.
And then it goes up, I think it's three sections of the fencing that faces the football field.
Okay. You also, we spoke about the, the height of the fence itself.
Eight feet.
Eight feet tall, so that's going to be an eight-foot-high barrier. But, I'm, I'm happy that we're going to read, or we will go back and re-inspect and re-evaluate after the initial, after the initial installment is done.
Yes. Vibroscience is already, all we have to do is tell Joe when we want him up.
Right. So, there'll be testing. I'm optimistic that that 10-decibel decrease will be met.
So, we'll wait.
Yep. So, and there are other ideas, I believe it was Council Flaherty mentioned, that there could be future mitigation steps that we could take. I'm actually a little bit intrigued by Ms. Trudel's comment about a bubble. That was a very intriguing question. So, so, I am, I, I think that the, I'm optimistic that we may have a solution, or at least we got a first start to the solution. I'm very happy about that. So, I think, hearing from the neighbors, I am more optimistic that this is a good first step. We don't lose anything by taking this first step. Obviously, it's going to cost some money, but it is a good step, and it will bring some kind of an increase. My hope is that we will get exactly what we're being told about.
And just for those who weren't at the Ways and Means, these are installed on the interior portion of the courts. So, the quilted part faces the pickleball courts, and the blocker, it will be against the chain link fence.
Great. And I will, I'll commit to the neighbors that if we do have another issue, and I will stay in touch with you, I'd be happy to have a neighborhood meeting along with the mayor's office and the representatives of the mayor's office. That was to the point of Ms. Trudel's, is there an opportunity for us to have a formal or a more open discussion, less formal than what we have here this evening? Thank you, Mr. President. So, I'm gonna go back where we were. We were in the public comment section of the meeting. So, does anybody else from the public would like to speak on this matter? Okay. Go ahead.
I have a resident comment that was emailed.
Sure.
For the record, this is from Gregory Walsh at 160 Hobart Ave. For the record, I am in support of Braintree pickleball sound screens.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, I, I just want to add, I hope this is a step in the right direction to address the concerns that the neighbors have with the noise. It is their neighborhood, and hopefully, it will help with the situation. I think, to me, the Braintree Pickleball Association has really been great for the town and for the, it's, it's a great example of how, you know, we've, we made improvements at one of our parks, and I think we, it's one of the best things about the town of Braintree is our parks that we have throughout the town. And, and I, I think it's, the pickleball association is, you know, it's, it's, they're a great bunch of people that, you know, like to have fun and play pickleball, and maybe I'm gonna try to get out there as well and play pickleball, but I'm afraid I'm gonna hurt myself if I try to do it.
I need some extra padding.
Wow.
Sorry, it's hard to tell.
Anywho, anyway, so, you know, we're talking earlier about community preservation funds being utilized for windows, and now we're talking about community preservation funds being utilized for sound attenuation, and it's, it's, it's very good that we have these funds to be able to do these types of projects in the town of Braintree. So, having said that, is there any further discussion from the council? Any further comments, questions, discussion from the public? Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay, do we have a motion? Oh, we gotta take a vote. Let's, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous? Okay, do we have a motion on this matter?
Yes, Mr. President. In accordance to the provisions of MGL, Chapter 44B, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the amount of $22,063.20 to be expended from the Open Space and Recreation Fund for acoustic sound panels at the Darty Pickleball Courts located at 538, 546 Washington Street, Assessors Map 2022, plots 01 and 2A, said funds shall be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee Director of Planning and Community Development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. So, anyone that doesn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting can get up and leave.
Thank you very much.
If you can bring the conversations outside, that would be great. Thank you. We have to, we have more meeting, more items to discuss. Alrighty, so, the next item on the agenda, we're gonna go back to the agenda in order. 24005, Mayor Authorization to Accept a Donation Livery Van or Take Up Any Action Related There Too. I'm gonna refer to Council Baraka, the chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation for Order 24005.
Thank you very much, President Ryan. The committee met last week, and we are sending this with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Would anyone from the mayor's staff like to speak on 24005? Okay. Would any council member like to discuss this? Have any questions, comments? Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had an opportunity to speak with the veteran service officer the other day. They're ecstatic over having this opportunity to utilize this donation for providing rides for our veteran community, as well as towards meetings, luncheons, other, other related activities. This will also be utilized in the Braintree Day Parade, which he's very excited about, instead of having to rent at $250 a trolley, which they normally use, to the point that they, he's going to trick the vehicle up. He's gonna take it, he's gonna put his flags on there and the emblems of all of the branches of service. So, he's very excited, and I'm very grateful to the organization who has offered this to the town. Thank you.
Any further discussions from the council on 24005? Okay, do we have a motion for this?
Mr. President, I move that the town of Braintree be and hereby is authorized, in accordance with Section 53A of Chapter 44 of the Mass General Laws, to accept the following gift upon the conditions attached to her and set forth, that donor being Braintree Holiday and Friends, the gift of 2008 Chevy van for the purpose of being used by Veteran Affairs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 24008, Superintendent of Schools, MSBA Statement of Interest Corps, Project Braintree High School, or Take Up Any Action Related There Too. First, I'm gonna refer to Councilor Baraka, the chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on Order 24008. Meredith?
Thank you very much, President Ryan. The committee met last week, and sending this to the council was a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak? Superintendent Lee, would you like to speak on this matter? Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you all for entertaining this. For those of you who have been here, this is year six, us trying to submit a statement of interest to renovate or rebuild Braintree High School. You know, every year, we update the information in our submission in the hopes that we'll be invited into that process. This vote that you might take this evening is simply to authorize me, as superintendent, to submit the statement of interest with no guarantees of success at this point in time, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the councilor? Councilor Hume, well, here comes the microphone around the bend.
Thank you, Mr. President. No questions, and I'm gonna say what I say every year. As a former member of the school committee, chair of the school building committee, Council Ringus also served on the school committee, as a superintendent said, this is just a submission to MSBA asking them to partner with us. We've been so fortunate and grateful to the MSBA for their partnership on almost all of our schools, and this is a partnership that's worth half of the amount of money. And I always equate it to residents to say, if you wanted to do an addition on your house, it was gonna be $200,000. Somebody who's willing to give you $100,000, you would absolutely partner with them. So, it's foolish of us to not partner with MSBA because we'd be leaving mil, literally millions of dollars on the table. And as I said, we've done so many projects, windows, buildings, roofs, boilers, new schools, renovations to school, basically, brand-new East, a whole new, brand-new South. Yep, so, so many projects. The list goes on and on, and I appreciate the work that you've done in the school committee in bringing this before us every year. I will absolutely be supporting this. But, again, it's always in the works, so residents understand. It's not that we aren't addressing Braintree High School. As the superintendent said, this is the sixth time. So, this has been in the works. There was a plan in place for this to happen after the middle schools and the space needs at the elementary schools. So, I ask people to be patient and wait for this, and there is work to be done. If anybody has any questions, you can always reach out. But, this is such a great partnership with MSBA, and the SOI is required in order to enter into that agreement. Yep. Thanks.
Any other councils, Council members?
As you said, this is, thank you, Mr. Lee, for being here. This is the sixth year, and I think, as Council Hume said, we both served on the school committee together. Usually, she makes her little statement, then I echo her immediately after. So, we'll just continue that trend. Like, I think for residents at home, like Council Hume said, this is a, it's a first step, and we can be, we're hopeful. I know in the past, we have, and I think this is the sixth consecutive year we've done it, but I think it actually had happened in years prior to, that it wasn't necessarily consecutive. Obviously, we've been voted out before due to the fact that we're, you know, they say that we're not at enrollment, that the building isn't as decrepit a condition as they would like it to be. But, this is, we have partnered with MSBA successfully on a lot of projects, whether it be school roofs, whether it be, you know, New South. So, we've been very successful. We can cross our fingers and hope. My 18, my 19-year-old did not, got through the old high school. My 14-year-old is, was upset with me this year. She is now a freshman at the high school, and because of COVIDs, she didn't get to take part in South. Mr. Rainey had invited her back to do a tour there, and I immediately got a phone call of why it wasn't ready when she was in eighth grade. So, she's at the high school. I made a, I made a suggestion that possibly the high school could be done by the time she graduates, but I anticipate that will not happen before she graduates. But, I do have a six-month-old, so I'm hoping that we can get that done by the time she gets up there.
You are a creative individual, Mr. President.
I'm just gonna keep going.
That's right.
Good, good spacing, Council Ringus.
Thank you. Thank you, President Ryan, and thank you to my colleagues and to Council Hume for serving on the school building committee for eight years? Longer than that, so, thank you. I have a question. Is there an estimated, is it 10-year runway? That was something that I'd heard floating out there, when you put in these SOIs for MSBA, that it typically takes towns 10 years. Is that, can you validate or decry that requirement?
I wouldn't say 10 years. I, I would say it's based on other communities that are applying in the condition of their building at that moment.
Okay.
So, you have to be the best of the worst, and that's how you get invited in. So, although we keep submitting, we also continue to move up that list of most decrepit, which is not an award we want to win. But, in terms of getting invited into the MSBA process, that's where we need to be. So, every single year, they partner with other communities on large-scale projects, and that school comes off their list, and we move up a notch. So, whether it's three, five, eight years, I couldn't tell you, but I think we are getting to that place where our building sadly is in such disrepair. It needs such a capital commitment that we would rise in the ranks of MSBA priority and potentially get invited in. And so, we want to be in that position so that when they say yes, we're ready to go. And beyond just getting invited in is the next step in the process because, as Council person Hume indicated, the cost of some of these projects is immense, and to not partner with the MSBA is leaving tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars on the table. So, we want to be ready.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. And for residents watching at home, I would encourage you to, you can get the statement of interest on the council documents. It's, it's long, but it's readable, and I urge you to read it so you can understand what our teachers and our students are working with at the high school every day, and as a parent of two high schoolers, doing an unbelievable job with the staff and the faculty there. But, the building needs a lot of work. So, thank you for taking the time to be here, sticking with us tonight, and for, for writing the SOI again. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Council, any other councils have any comments or questions? Okay, well, I want to thank Superintendent for, you know, submitting this SOI that we have a chance. If we don't submit an SOI, the answer is no. So, for submitting it and stay, you know, holding fast to every year submitting it. So, hopefully, as you said, we're gonna, we'll change our fortune, and we'll be able to get these funds. And I want to thank, echo Council Baraka, thank Council Hume for her service on the school building committee, and it's, it's, we've done a lot of good projects in the town, but there's a lot more good work that hopefully we can do in the near future. So, thank you. So, if there's no further comments or questions from the council, do we have a motion on this matter?
Mr. President, I move that, having it been in an open meeting on February 27th of 2024, prior to the SOI submission closing date, Town Council Braintree, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated January 18th, 2024, for the Braintree High School located at 128 Town Street in Braintree, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority number five, replacement or renovation or modernization of the school facility system such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. And hereby, further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Braintree or the Braintree School to fund an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, that's all we have for the evening for Old Business, and now on to New Business. 00724, Council President Powers and Sullivan, Markham LLP Audit Review for FY23. Markham LLP Audit Review for FY23. Romina Mammeli, partner from the company, is here to present. So, Romina, Mike Nelligan is retired?
Yeah, so a couple, couple exciting things. So first of all, thank you, Mr. President. Couple exciting things. So Powers and Sullivan has been acquired by Markham LLP as of February 1st. So you're going to notice that your reports that you have in front of you are still Powers and Sullivan because we did still issue them under Powers and Sullivan, and Mike Nelligan retired. So, so I was the onsite partner for the audit, and Mike always did the engagement quality control review after the fact. So he was kind of the independent eyes that were looking at the audit reports. So tonight with me is Renee Davis.
Hello.
So she, she actually completed that independent review of these reports, and she signed these reports. So she's here for anything additional that I may miss as I go over. So I want to start with the ACFA, so the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. We actually have not submitted this yet to the GFOA. It will go in by Thursday. That's when it's due. So, but we did want to get you a final copy of this report. We're just going through and doing our submission right now, our application, and all of that. It's 143 pages, and there's several sections within this report. Just going to glance over them. So there's a transmittal letter in here that is written by Ed Spellman, and it's kind of like a, just an overview of what's happening in the town. What, what are your future economic projects going on? What would your budget like? What's the difference in your median values of your homes? That sort of stuff. Beyond that is an org chart. It has the certificate from prior year, so congratulations, you did get the certificate for the 2022 ACFA that was submitted. That was actually your 11th certificate, so you've been doing this since FY12. So that's great news, and we anticipate, based on what we're submitting to the GFOA, that we have no worries that you'll receive a certificate for the FY23 report. Beyond that is our audit opinion. So Powers and Sullivan, again, that's going to change a little bit. Next year it'll be Markham, but right now it's Powers and Sullivan. And that is the only part of the report that we own. Those three pages, three to four pages of the opinion are the only part of this. So what we do is we come in in the spring, we do some of our work, and then in the fall, we get final numbers, and we actually help to put these together. But all of that information comes from your finance department. So although we help with this, we don't take any credit for it. That's all, that's all the finance department. Beyond that is management's discussion and analysis. So this is kind of like a synopsis, like a quick read, 15 pages of what's happened. So why did things go up? Why did things go down? What got issued for debt? What type of capital assets have been purchased? It looks at all levels of the report from your government-wide financials to your fund financial statements to your budget to actual. So if you're just looking for a quick idea of what's happened in the community over the course of the past year, that would be a good spot to, to take a quick read on that. Then beyond that's the basic financial statements, and then we have the notes to the financial statements. Following that is your required supplementary information, which is a 10-year trend schedule that talks about your OPEB, your pension numbers, and it breaks out the town numbers from the Belt Electric Light Planet because, again, those are separately audited by, by Gule Selvita. And after that, you have some combining statements, and that just takes your non-major governmental funds and breaks them out into a little more detail so you can kind of pinpoint how much was non expendable permanent funds, how much was expendable permanent funds, town special revenue, so on and so forth. And then after that, you have your statistical section, which is the same idea, 10-year trend schedules of different, different revenue capacities, debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and some other operating information. So I can tell you that the report was very clean. The only way that you can actually submit for an ACFA is if you have an unmodified audit opinion, which is what you have. It's the cleanest opinion you can have. We found no significant audit findings. We had full cooperation from everybody in finance. We, we got everything, I'm going to say, quicker than last year, and hence the reason we were just here in September, hence the reason that we're here now in February. There were no significant audit adjustments beyond our, our usual gap adjustments. And then the, what, what really we were waiting for the longest, we got, we were out here in August, September timeframe, and we got final ledgers in the middle of December, and that was just because they were still working through a couple of the cash reconciliations and receivable reconciliations. So, so a couple of things I just want to point out, it's a, it's a really, really big report. So I just want to point out a couple of things. For your budget to actual, your revenues came in $6.6 million more than what was budgeted, and that's because you're doing a very conservative budget. Your departmental and other came in, I think that was $2.3 million higher, and that was, 1.3 million of that was from building permits. Your investment earnings came in higher, that was $3 million, and that was because interest rates are up. You have ARPA money. You have all sorts of stuff that you're, you're earning more, more of your interest on. And your motor vehicle and excise tax was up $1 million over what was budgeted. Your total actual expenditures, including your encumbrances, were $4.2 million less than what you budgeted. So all of that gets turned back into the town and eventually will become free cash. So all in all, it was, it was very good. Your debt service as a percentage of your total budget was 6.5%. That's exactly where you want to be. Anywhere between 5 and 10% is what these rating agencies are looking at. So you came in right, right in the middle. Your general fund, you actually had increased $6.8 million from last year, and that was partly from your budgetary results, and it's partly because you get a $1.5 million transfer in from the belt. As far as your unassigned fund balance, that went up, that's, went up by $6 million, and that actual amount is 11.3% of your total general fund expenditures, and that range that you want to be in for your debt rating agencies is between 7 and 15. So same idea, you're right in the middle. You're right where you want to be for that. The other big things that are in your report are your pension and OPEB liabilities. So for your pension liability, that liability actually increased this year. So last year it was only $80 million. This year it went up to just under $119 million. And that is because of the trends we saw with the market. So last year, we saw this with the OPEB, where OPEB really increased over, over the prior year, so '21 to '22. And now this year, it went up a little bit, but it didn't go up from the, from the change in the market. That's what happened to your pension. So if, if everything goes the same and the flow of the market is the same, which we all know it may not be the case, but if that was the same, we'd expect that number to come back down. So your pension liability, actually, you had investment earnings last year of $38 million. This year, you had a loss of $37 million. So the increase of the $80 million to the $119 million was mainly from that. Your OPEB liability, you actually had, again, that, that went up just a little bit. It was $179 million last year. This year, it went up to $189 million. You do have your OPEB trust fund, that's net of that, and your OPEB trust fund went up just under $1 million. It ended at $22.8 million. Of that amount, $14.5 million has been contributed by the town, and $8.3 million's been contributed by the belt. Are there any particular questions that you have? Yes.
Council Reynolds.
Thank you for your presentation.
Of course. Oh, there's two, there's another couple of things, but I'll take, I'll take questions on the ACFA.
All right.
You got it.
Well, I just have a question based on what you just talked about in terms of the market impact on the pension liability. So can you just confirm for me the base year of the market activity that you are, that, that impacts the results that you had just
So for, yeah, so for the town, it would have been taken as of 12/31/22.
Okay. So, and this is a result of how the market performed in 2022?
Correct.
Okay. And our next report will include the market impacts on these same reported areas for the, for the calendar year of 2023?
Correct.
Okay. And so this is just, from what I have been following, the market of 2023 has not performed to the level of the market of 2022.
Okay. So we, we've seen the increase in your OPEB, which was evaluated as of June 30th, 2023.
Okay.
So currently, if, actually, not to make you guys flip, but on page 99 and on page 99, and you can see a history of the trends
Right.
for your retirement system. So you did have a down year back in 2018 and 2015. So in 2021, that was a 15% return on your investments. In 2022, it was a negative 11% return on your investments. So that, along with other factors that the actuary would put together, would result in how that, how that market would change, how that, how that liability tool will change based on what they see in the market.
Terrific. Thank you. You've answered my question.
So to kind of ask
Yeah.
a question along those lines. So this performance that we've had over the last two, four, six, eight, nine years, does that pretty much mirror other communities? Nothing outstanding, pretty in line with everyone else?
Yes, very much so. And I believe all of your funds are in Pritt for your, for what you have for your OPEB, and I think the, the retirement system, the majority of the money is in Pritt. And that is, I'm going to say, a safe place to have it. We have a lot of communities that keep their money in there, and they're, they tend to be less volatile in the market.
Council Moore?
Just to follow up on that, when did, when did the town move their money into Pritt?
Oh, maybe I'm mistaken. I thought it was in Pritt. I have in my notes.
When I was a member of the retirement board, we were managing the portfolio ourselves, and we had a, we had hired out a portfolio manager. So I don't, and I also thought we were at the Mass Municipal Depository Trust.
Oh, I apologize. You are, you're an MMTT. My apologies. Yes, my apologies. You are an MMTT.
Yeah, so.
So you go to page 86, Romina?
Yeah.
OPEB's all in Pritt.
That's.
17 million of the retirement systems in Pritt, out of 252. So a lot of it is managed in Pritt, 17 millions in Pritt.
Yeah. I'm just concerned because Pritt is, Pritt is designed for a larger pool than most municipal retirement systems. For instance, when Wellesley went into Pritt, thinking that they had fully funded, they had to go back and fund because Pritt invested differently than Wellesley did. So, you know, that just caught me off guard. Can I just go back to page 21? And I, I don't want to take a lot of time tonight. I'm only, you know, I appreciate, you know, the council's time, and I don't want to go down the rabbit hole too much. But the first paragraph, and the governmental net position increased by $240,000 during the current year as compared to $3.4 million increase in the prior year. Town's revenue increased by $17.9 million, and expenses increased by $21.1 million. At your citing, operating grant revenue came in lower, capital grant rating came in higher, so that helped. But you are also looking at Mass Teachers Retirement System and pension and OPEB being the offset, offsetting, you know, the major offset reasons. I would appreciate the chance to talk, you know, and I will ask the mayor's office to talk to you individually about this so that I'm not monopolizing this conversation. I always find these reports very helpful, and Powers and Sullivan has always been excellent to work with, and I appreciate your work on all, all this. And you did clarify that, that the revenue surplus is coming both from conservative revenue estimates and operational surpluses.
Yes.
So we're, we're seeing both contribute, probably 60, 40, in, in that area. Okay. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
We do have a breakout of, you know, for, for the report itself, we keep it kind of at a certain level, but we have the breakout of each piece of what makes up that $240,000 change, so we can absolutely go through that.
I just don't want to go over.
No, I get it. We, we dive into these numbers, and we're, we're in them, basically consumed in them for, through the report. One of the other reports you have in front of you is the report on federal award programs, and that's your CIFA report. So this year, Town of Braintree had $13.1 million worth of federal expenditures. We audited three grants, the Child Nutrition Cluster, which made up $1.6 million of that, the ARPA funds, which made up $6.3 million, and the Education Stabilization Fund, which was $1.6 million. So we actually audited 72% of your grants, but there's reasons on risk assessments and rotation that requires us to do those audits. 44% of your CIFA funds were spent on school programs. You had $8 million total of COVID funds, and you had 24 different programs included in your CIFA in the current year. Any questions on that?
Thank you. Thank you. So in years past, there's been findings?
So, yes. So last year, you had three findings. We issued a management letter last year. One was on the Student Activity Module, which I believe that the town and the school had decided to hold off on because of the cost of the, of the program. You had a finding that was related to IT controls, and per the belt, there's been implementations made that have resolved those findings. And then the other one was the Munis conversion, which has been, yeah, which has been an issue for, I think we've included it for probably the past three or four years. And part of us getting these reports, the, the trial balances, I'm going to say the trial balances from, from finance in December, was because there were still two issues that were outstanding, and that they were working with the vendor to be able to rectify. And so they've been able to do that. We don't feel like it needs to still be included. COVID's kind of a little bit past us. They've done a lot to kind of get to where they need to be now, and so it was more of an informational comment than it was an issue.
Okay. So no finding is at all, at all. I think I've been getting this for 10 years and have never seen, and it's unusual in an audit. There's always something.
There's always something, but a lot of it is, you know, if we find something along the way, we have communications with management. So sometimes we feel it's relevant to include in a physical letter, and sometimes it's sitting down with the finance director or sitting down with the treasurer and saying, hey, this is the stuff we found, and they're rectifying it right away. We like to put items in there that we feel would help the community, or sometimes it's things to, to enable change, or to enable them to implement a new system, or, or, you know, make a change that they don't have the power to do on their own. And so there, there was definitely some small items here and there, but nothing that we thought should be warranted into management.
So all the Munis issues have been worked out, because, yeah, that was longstanding an issue in here.
Yeah, and when we, when we had done our fieldwork, so we did our fieldwork last week in August, first week in September. So we were able to come in, do a lot of the testing, look at the, the bank statements, look at, pull all of our expenditures, do all of that, do all of that testing. And then once we got the trial balance, once they got cash reconciled, then we just imported a new trial balance, and we were able to work through all of our work papers again and get to that point. So they're much better than where they were. Yeah, much better than where they were, and we're hopeful for this year. I already spoke with the town accountant, and he had said, you know, we're, same idea, we're scheduled for that same timeframe, and he had said that they're working hard to make sure that we meet that timeframe this year.
Thank you.
So when you have findings, and then the next report comes out, there's no, like, closing out the findings, to kind of like document that the findings have been closed out?
The management's, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
If you're going to, if you could come up to the podium, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry, steal, steal the mic for one minute. We certainly can. So you're right, very typically, if we had material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the audit, they have to be reported to you. There were, there were none, and there have been none. Last year, as Romina mentioned, there were three other comments that were in. When we looked at the report this year, all three are considered resolved. We can certainly issue your report, saying these were the comments last year, and this was the resolution, and why there are no comments this year. That, if that helps to have closure, we're certainly willing to do that.
So would that would be part of this report?
No.
It would be a separate, separate report?
Separate management letter.
Yeah.
But then it's like a management letter saying you had comments last year, they're fully resolved, there's no existing comments.
There you go.
But if that helps with closure, we're
I would think it would be very appropriate.
Yeah. We'll do it. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for asking that question, Councilor Hume. That's it?
Questions?
Yep. Any questions, comments?
Appreciate this coming quickly, since, since last year was a lag, so thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. And I just want to say that, you know, I've, I've been on the council a long time, and Powers and Sullivan has always been a
Powers and Sullivan has always been a, a very consistent, steady hand, helping the town make sure that we're doing, you know, the right thing with our finances, and it's a hope with the retirement of Mike Nelligan, and the change in the companies, and the retirement of Ed Spelman. So I hope we're gonna see the same consistency in the future. That's what I'm hoping for.
I'll comment, I'll comment on that, too.
Thank you.
So again, Romina's the, Romina's the consistent one. He, she's the one that's been here doing the day-to-day work. I have filled in Mike's place, reviewing the reports, actually doing the final sign-off on the reports. There's change, change, right? Mike, Mike finally gets to retire. We will certainly miss Mike. There's a little change. We changed our company. We're merging with a, with a much larger company. There are some, you know, procedural changes that will go along with that, of course, being part of a large organization. I will say that 100% of Powers and Sullivan employees, well, except for Mike. Everyone, all 30 or so employees, except for Mike, who decided to retire, have gone to the new company. So you're gonna see, you're still gonna have Romina, you're still gonna have the same team in the field, and the same support behind her. Hopefully, it'll be an improvement. Hopefully, we'll have more support than we've actually had before. There's, you know, reasons for change. You know, we wish Ed, you know, I knew Ed very, very well, I've served on committees with Ed, and, you know, we wish Ed and Mike, you know, a happy retirement, so that has to happen. I hope that you find that things get better, and that we can continue to support the Town of Braintree.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we're gonna have referral to the committee on Ways and Means. Do we have a motion to refer all items to appropriate committees?
No move, Mr. President.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous? So let me get back. That ends our New Business as well. I'd like to say that our next meeting is gonna be on Wednesday, March 6th, and that's because the presidential, presidential primary election is gonna be on Tuesday, March 5th. So we're gonna have our meeting on Wednesday, March 6th. I'd like to thank B Camp for televising, I'd like to thank Bill Needham, Jerry McCormick, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move, Mr. President.
Second.
All in favor?